Good afternoon. Welcome to the City Planning Commission. Today's date is February 27, 2023. This is our review session. My name is Dan Grottnick. I'm the Chair of the City Planning Commission, Director of the Department of City Planning. We're very pleased to begin today's review session. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Cerullo, Crowell, Dweck, Marine Osorio, and Rampershad. Welcome. Thanks to all of you. Before we get to today's agenda, I just wanted to highlight some recent news out of the Department of City Planning. Last week, we announced the creation of a seven-member Community Planning and Engagement Division. City Planning's first new division since 2016. This team of urban planners is already transforming how the agency works with communities by ensuring that their voices are heard from the start of our planning work. As a former council member, I understand how important it is to make this connection with our neighbors, and we are quite serious about our collaboration with community residents, workers, advocates, and elected officials as we tackle our city's biggest challenges. So more to come on that for sure, but we were very pleased to be able to kick that off last week. Another important item. Last week, for Black History Month, the Department of City Planning's Women's Employee Resource Coalition, known as WORK, had the honor of speaking with New York City's first Black Council Speaker, Adrienne Adams, and her colleague, Councilmember Nantasha Williams, about Black women making it in city government. This video is available on the City Planning YouTube channel, and I highly, highly recommend that everyone check it out. And I would like to give a special shout-out to City Planning's own Siobhan Jackson, who is a co-leader of WORK for taking the lead on organizing this important conversation between City Planning and Speaker Adams and Councilmember Williams. My deep appreciation to the Speaker and the Councilmember for participating. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the earthquake that devastated South Turkey and North Syria earlier this month. Tens of thousands of people have lost their lives, with many more injured and thousands of buildings destroyed in towns and cities throughout the region. Our thoughts continue to be with everyone who is impacted by this catastrophe. Now, on today's agenda, we have two new housing proposals starting public review. Both are in Brooklyn. We'll start with a development in Borough Park, close to the D train at 1233 57th Street, a proposal for about 60 homes, 18 of them designated as income-restricted. This part of the borough has only seen about 65 new homes built since 2014, and this is an opportunity, therefore, to nearly double that number with just a single project. In Bath Beach, at 1421 86th Street, we will certify a project that would include around 60 homes, 20 of them income-restricted, and ground-floor retail. It would be a half-block from Diker Beach Park and a half-mile from the D train, providing residents with great open space and an accessible transit option. The third item on the agenda today is for a project on Staten Island at 56 William Avenue, which also happens to be in the Special South Richmond Development District. The application before us today proposes to remove a 50-year-old zoning designation that requires a small area of open space on private property, inhibiting any development options without a zoning action. I will note, at any given time, the Department of City Planning is managing hundreds of applications from individual homeowners in the special districts for permission to build or expand their homes. This creates an expensive and bureaucratic process, which we are currently seeking to reduce and address by establishing clear and common-sense rules for property owners to follow, certainly here in Staten Island special districts, but also across New York City's many and diverse communities. So more to come on a proposal designed to make life easier for New Yorkers and also to help relieve unnecessary work burdens on city agencies like ours. We will also get a pre-hearing refresher from our Queens team on a project proposed for 14105 109th Avenue in South Jamaica. That would bring a four-story building with 56 homes, 14 income-restricted, and also ground-floor retail office space and even open space in an area that today is dominated by auto repair shops and offers few services for residents and other businesses. We'll also hear recommendations from City Planning staff on applications already in public review and for which we've already had a hearing, including a project to expand a local supermarket and create new office space in Borough Park that is paperific, and a proposed office tower that aims to create about 1,500 jobs in Long Island City at 2310 Queens Plaza South. Let me note that we have also been joined by Commissioners Bozorg and Goodridge. And with that, let me turn it over to you, Ryan, to kick off today's review session.
Certainly. So this is the New York City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, February 27, 2023. The time is 1:08 PM, and a quorum is present in the hearing room at 1:20 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District 12, presenting for the first time to the City Planning Commission is Emily Bachman.
All right. Welcome, Emily. Good to have you here.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Grottnick. This is a private application from 1233 57th Street LLC for a zoning map amendment from an R5 district to an R6A district and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to facilitate the development of a new eight-story, approximately 79,000-square-foot residential building containing 60 dwelling units, 18 of which would be income-restricted under Mandatory Inclusionary Housing, or MIH. The project is located at 1233 57th Street, between 12th and 13th Avenues in Borough Park, Community District 12, Brooklyn. This is an aerial view looking north toward downtown Brooklyn and Manhattan with the project area outlined in blue and the development site, the proposed development site outlined in yellow. The project area is in Borough Park, a neighborhood in southwest Brooklyn and is bounded by Sunset Park to the west, Greenwood Cemetery and Windsor Terrace to the north, Kensington and Midwood to the east, and Diker Heights and Bensonhurst to the south. The project area is two blocks southwest of the 55th Street subway station at New Utrecht Avenue, which provides D train service. Now, looking west, you can see the project area is also half a mile north of the N train station at Fort Hamilton Parkway and three blocks north of the Bay Ridge Line freight rail tracks, where the MTA is undertaking planning and environmental analysis for the Interborough Express, or IBX. In addition to D and N train access, there are two northbound and one southbound B-16 bus stops within a block of the project area, providing service between Bay Ridge and Prospect Lefferts Gardens. Here is a land use map with the project area outlined again in blue and the proposed development site outlined in yellow. The project is located on 57th Street, which is a 60-foot-wide street, considered narrow for the purposes of zoning. And we can see the intersection of two wide commercial corridors, New Utrecht and 13th Avenues, just two blocks to the northeast of the project area. The light-yellow lots are 1, 2, and multifamily residential buildings ranging from two to four stories in height. The red lots are commercial and office uses, while the orange lots are mixed-use commercial and residential buildings. The commercial uses are primarily small local businesses serving local retail needs. And the blue lots represent public facilities and institutions, which include a large public preschool at the corner of 57th Street and 13th Avenue, and numerous synagogues, yeshivas, and churches throughout the neighborhood. The project area has been mapped R5 since 1961, a lower-density zoning district that allows a maximum FAR of 1.25 and typically produces three- and four-story attached houses and small apartment houses. There are unique zoning regulations in Borough Park that have been in place since 1983 that facilitate larger 1, 2, and 3-family residences and larger front lawns than elsewhere in the city. The corner of the block immediately to the east of the project area has taller buildings from five to eight stories, reflecting R6 C13 zoning, which allows for a maximum residential FAR of 2.43, commercial FAR of 2, and community facility FAR of 4.8. And I'll note that while the prevalence of 1- to 4-unit residential buildings in this area makes the built character less dense than New York City as a whole, population data indicate that the number of residents per unit is significantly higher in Borough Park than elsewhere in the city, with more rooms per unit, more occupants per room, and larger family size. This is a view looking east toward the 55th Street D train station. You can see the vacant development site outlined in the foreground. In the remaining area outlined in blue, you can see the non-applicant-controlled portion of the proposed rezoning area. That's 2,000, 3,000-square-foot lots containing 2- to 3-story, 6,800-square-foot buildings with an FAR of 2, containing three units each. These buildings were constructed in 1994 and are not projected for development. Zooming in to the eastern edge of the project area, this is a view from 57th Street, looking northeast, where you can see the non-applicant-owned residential buildings, again on the left. The project area also includes a portion of the lot containing the taller building on the right. That's a 6,000-square-foot interior lot with an eight-story, 30,600-square-foot mixed-use development constructed in 2007, which contains 12 residential units and ground-floor commercial office space that is the current headquarters of a local shipping logistics company. This building reflects the 4.8 FAR allowed as of right along 13th and New Utrecht Avenues, which again are zoned R6 with a commercial overlay. Turning in the opposite direction and looking west on 57th Street, you can see the project area and development site on the right, as well as 1- and 2-family homes across the street on the left. Down the block and directly across from the development site is a medical office building with a blue awning. And last, this is a recent picture of the proposed development site standing on 57th Street and looking north. The development site is made up of three vacant interior lots, combined as a single zoning lot and with a total lot area of approximately 22,000 square feet. This site was formerly improved with 1- and 2-family homes built in 1905 and which were demolished in 2021. The applicant is proposing a new eight-story-plus seller and subseller residential building with a total floor area of 79,330 square feet or a total FAR of 3.6. The proposed development will increase in height from 43 feet or four stories on the westernmost portion of the zoning lot to 83 feet or eight stories at the easternmost portion of the zoning lot. This height transition reflects zoning rules that limit the height of developments adjacent to R5 districts to a maximum height of 45 feet within 25 feet of the adjacent R5 district and require an eight-foot side yard adjacent to the R5 district. The proposed development would feature a total of 60 dwelling units with an average 1,300 square feet per unit and between 2 to 4 bedrooms per unit. A total of 94 parking spaces are proposed, 27 of which are required, and 67 of which would be voluntarily provided. To facilitate the development, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to change the existing R5 district to an R6A zoning district. The proposed rezoning area has 290 feet of street frontage on the north side of 57th Street and is located mid-block, 150 feet west of 13th Avenue. The proposed R6A zoning district is a medium-density contextual residential district that typically produces high-lot coverage, six- and seven-story apartment buildings set at or near the street line. R6A allows base heights between 40 and 65 feet, after which a 15-foot setback is required on a narrow street before rising to a maximum height of 85 feet when mapped in inclusionary housing areas. Off-street parking is required for 50% of market-rate residential units and optional for income-restricted housing units in the transit zone. The applicant is also proposing a zoning text amendment to map Mandatory Inclusionary Housing, or MIH, Options 1 and 2, coterminous with the proposed project area. Option 1 requires that a minimum of 25% of residential floor area be designated as affordable to households earning incomes with an average not exceeding 60% area median income, or AMI. And Option 2 requires that a minimum of 30% of residential floor area be designated as affordable to households earning incomes with an average not exceeding 80% AMI. While both Options 1 and 2 would be mapped, the applicant is currently planning to select MIH Option 2, resulting in 18 income-restricted housing units for low-to-moderate-income households with an average income of 80% AMI. This application requires a racial equity report, which helps put the MIH proposal into context with neighborhood-level socioeconomic data. According to the racial equity report, the AMI in Community District 12 is about $49,900, which is 30% lower than citywide AMI. The applicant states that the proposal would produce new income-restricted housing units in a location that is within a quarter-mile of a subway station and has seen limited affordable development. Since 2014, 105 income-restricted units have been preserved, and just 65 income-restricted units have been constructed in Community District 12. The population living in Borough Park, Kensington, and Ocean Parkway is 65% white, non-Hispanic, 17% Asian, non-Hispanic, 11% Hispanic, Latino, and 2% Black, non-Hispanic. This percent of white residents is two times greater, and percent of Black residents is 10 times smaller than New York City as a whole. From 2010 to 2020, the area saw an 8% increase in population with an increase in the Asian, Black, and Hispanic populations and a small decrease in the white population. While population grew by 8%, the number of housing units in Community District 12 grew by just 3%. The applicant states that the proposed development would contribute to New York City's fair housing goals by producing new affordable housing units in an area where population growth has outpaced growth in housing supply. So to conclude, this is a private application from 1233 57th Street LLC for zoning map amendment from an R5 district to an R6A district and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to facilitate the development of a new eight-story, 79,000-square-foot residential building containing 60 dwelling units and 18 income-restricted units. And I'm happy to take questions.
Great. And congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I go to my colleagues, who may have some questions, I only have one. And it relates to the connection between the proposed R6A and the R5 next door. As you described, there is a 45-foot height limit where you're within 25 feet of an R5, correct?
Yeah. And that's basically what we're seeing in this rendering.
Show us that. Why don't you walk us through where the R5 is in relation to what we're looking at right here?
Yeah. So the R5 district is on the left side of the screen, off-screen. The lower portion of the building proposed would be locked in to a maximum of 45 feet within 25 feet of that R5 district. You're seeing 43 feet, so two feet under what's required. So that transitional height from left to right in the building is pretty much locked in by the proposed zoning. A lot of illustrative diagrams are for illustrative purposes only, but that portion of the illustrative diagram is reflecting zoning requirements.
Okay. Within two feet, at least?
Within 25 feet.
Right. No, I'm saying it's 43, but it could be 45.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that means that, looking from across the street from where we're standing in this image, that's more than 25 feet. And behind these buildings, it's also more than 25 feet from the R5, correct?
The rear yard requirements are 30 feet. So there's a 30-foot setback on the rear of the building before reaching the backyards of the homes on the other side of the lot.
And across the street also is more than 25 feet, presumably?
Yeah. It's a 60-foot-wide street.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Let's see what other questions we have for you.
Thank you, Chair. And congratulations.
Thank you.
It's really wonderful to see you working at the Department of City Planning and presenting. It's really important for the city to have somebody with your skills and your values presenting here. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I had a quick question regarding the... The EAS mentions the open-space ratio per capita is lower than city standards. And I'm wondering if that has played out, if there have been any opportunities to address that somehow? It's understandable that the SEACR manual also sort of understands and acknowledges that it's sometimes difficult to address that. But I'm wondering if that has come across? That's my first question. I also have a question about the massing, but I'll hold off on that.
Okay. Yeah. So the area is lacking public open space. The closest park is a small playground, Rapid Porch Playground, about a half a mile away. The applicant is including a lot of terraces and rooftop garden and backyard garden in their renderings and proposal, which I think is partially to reflect that. And of course, they're required to plant street trees. But I think that that's the extent of the open-space actions.
But those green spaces will be open to the public?
Those would be private for residents.
Okay. I'm wondering if this process continues, maybe in conversations with the applicant, that could be discussed to see if there are opportunities to do that? And the other question that I had was sort of in regard... Regarding the massing, I'm wondering if, clearly, I mean, we're looking at a reflection of something that pretty much is dictated by zoning requirements, but I'm wondering if, in terms of urban design, there's been any opportunities discussed to try to break down what seems to be pretty solid?
Great question. I think that they have made some adjustments, which are seen here in differing colors and materials, to try to break down a monotonous street wall. But I can definitely prep them to respond to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rampershad?
Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. Is it possible for them to provide a full set of plans for the building? In our briefing packet, we don't... We only have like a subseller, seller, partial first floor. And also, the unit breakdown, how many 1, 2, and 3 bedrooms? Thank you.
Yeah. I believe that the... I can get that for you. And I believe that in the briefing packet there is potentially something about the unit mix. They're proposing the smallest units would be 2 bedrooms, which is in response to community board and the local electeds and reflective of the larger family size in the neighborhood. But I can get that for you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozorg?
Hi. I think you mentioned this, but if you could just repeat. Well, I heard how many income-restricted units have been built since 2014, but do you have the total number of units that have been built in the community board over the past decade or so?
I don't have that with me right now, but I can follow up with it.
That'd be great. And then the 94 parking spaces, how does that relate to what's actually required by zoning? First, what's proposed?
So they are required with this... If this were to be approved... I want to make sure I get this right. And I believe I had it in an earlier slide. They have proposed development, 27 required parking spaces for this development. So it's 50% of the market-rate units and then a lower requirement for income-restricted because it's in the transit zone.
But 94 spaces are being proposed?
Yes. So 64 of the proposed spaces are voluntary, not required by zoning.
And is all of that underground?
Yeah. They're proposing a seller and a subseller in order to fit those spaces.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Commissioner Crowell?
Could you just... I'm looking at the distribution of apartment sizes on page 22 on the presentation. Just to clarify, do you have an understanding of what the mix looks like as applied to each apartment classification on affordability?
I don't. That's a great question.
Because that neighborhood... And I'm glad to see that there are some 3-bedroom apartments, and then there's 3- to 4-bedroom duplexes. There are, you know, there's quite a number of families with larger sizes there. And just an interesting question to understand that distribution. Thank you.
Great question. Yeah. I will try to get that.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Commissioner Crowell, the distribution of the income-restricted units has to reflect the distribution of the market-rate units.
Great.
Thank you.
With a small number of affordable units, there will be some nuance there. So we'll take a look at that and get you... Yeah.
Okay. Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you again Emily. And with that, this item is certified. And we will look forward to seeing it again as it winds its way back to us. Thank you very much. And Ryan, let's go on to the next item.
Certainly. So the second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District 11. Also presenting for the first time as the Commissioner is Amelia Clark. I believe that she is on Zoom.
All right. Amelia, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome, welcome.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Garadnik and Commissioners. Slide please. This is a private application from Romantique Double Diamond Incorporated for a zoning map amendment from an R4 C22 district to an R7A C24 district and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F. These actions would facilitate the development of a new mixed-use building, including over 43,000 square feet of residential space, 57 dwelling units, and 1,500 square feet of ground floor commercial space. Slide please. The project is located at 1421 86th Street, between 14th and 15th Avenues in Bath Beach, CD 11, Brooklyn. Slide please. This is an aerial view looking north towards downtown Brooklyn and Manhattan. The project area sits on the northwest edge of Bath Beach, on the border of Bensonhurst and Diker Heights, neighborhoods in southwest Brooklyn. The project area is located approximately five blocks east of the Gowanus Expressway and about half a mile west of the 18th Avenue D train subway stop. The rezoning area is also one block east of Diker Beach Park and Golf Course. Slide please. The project area is served by several bus lines. The B1, B64, and Crossboro Express 28 and 38 bus lines run along 14th Avenue and 86th Street. The B1 and B64 lines stop directly across from the rezoning area on the corner of 14th Avenue and 86th Street. Slide please. On this land use map, 86th Street is in the center, which is a major corridor that is 100 feet wide. Running perpendicular to 86th Street is 14th Avenue, also considered a wide street at 80 feet wide. The project area is outlined in pink with the development site mid-block outlined in yellow. The light yellow lots on the map are residential uses in the surrounding area, which predominantly consist of two-to-three-story, one- and two-family attached and semi-detached buildings. The red lots are commercial and office uses. The orange lots are mixed residential with commercial and office uses on the ground floor, which consists of eating and drinking establishments, laundromats, barber shops and salons, a bank and optician, tutoring and learning centers, and professional offices. There are also a few automotive and non-conforming uses on 86th Street, including a gas station across 86th Street from the development site and an auto parts store on 86th Street towards 15th Avenue. Additionally, there are several public schools in the vicinity, shown with other public facilities and institutions on this map in blue. One school, District 20 Pre-K Center, is just within the 600-foot development area radius on 84th Street off of 14th Avenue. Diker Beach Park and Golf Course is located to the west of the proposed project area and consists of 248 acres of golf course, baseball fields, basketball courts, and various other sport courts. The project area is mapped R4 with a C22 overlay. R4 is a low-density residential district that allows for an FAR of .75 and generally produces two-to-three-story, single- or two-family homes. C22 is a commercial overlay typically mapped within residential neighborhoods along streets that serve local retail needs. C2 districts permit a slightly broader set of commercial uses than the nearby C1 districts. In mixed-use buildings, as is the case here, commercial uses are limited to two stories and must be below residential uses. The surrounding area is also zoned with other low-density residential districts, including R41, R4B, and R5B, which typically create one or two-family homes or three-story row houses. There is also a C8 zoning district adjacent to the project area. These are commercial districts allowing for automotive and other heavy commercial services. C81 permits an FAR of one and does not allow residential uses. Slide please. This is a northern aerial view that shows a complete picture of the rezoning area and development site. The rezoning area includes three lots with combined 360 feet of frontage along the north side of 86th Street, east from the corner of 14th Avenue. The development site is a single 10,000-square-foot interior lot within the rezoning area, and it is improved with three one-story buildings occupied by the applicant's commercial limousine rental company. There is approximately 49,000 square feet of aggregate floor area, .49 FAR at the site. The westerly portion of the site is used for auto sales, and the site contains two curb cuts. Slide please. This is a view of the development site looking east on 86th Street with Diker Heights Medical Associates in the background to the right. Slide please. This view looks northwest on 86th Street, which is 100 feet wide, with the development site on the right. Visible across 86th Street on the left side of the photo is a gas station and some single-story commercial establishments. Slide please. This view looks southeast on 86th Street with the development site on the left. Slide please. This view looks east from the corner of 86th Street and 14th Avenue towards the Scarpachi Funeral Home on the corner. Slide please. Lastly, this view looks southeast from 14th Avenue towards 86th Street. Slide. The applicant is proposing a nine-story-plus seller mixed-use building. Of the building's 45,000 square feet, about 1,500 square feet will be ground floor commercial, and over 43,000 square feet would be residential floor area. One ground floor commercial space will front along 86th Street, potentially to be occupied by the applicant's company. The proposed building will rise to a total height of 95 feet with a 15-foot qualifying ground floor, have a maximum base height of 75 feet, and will set back 10 feet from 86th Street above the seventh floor. There will be an 11-foot, 8-inch curb cut on 86th Street to access the cellar-level parking garage. The residential lobby will be accessed through an entrance on 86th Street. Of the 57 total dwelling units, 17 would be dedicated as permanently affordable pursuant to MIH Option 2. The first floor rear terrace and the building's roof level will contain outdoor tenant recreation space. The proposed development will include 25 accessory residential parking spaces and 29 bicycle parking spaces in the cellar level, which will be accessed through an entrance along 86th Street. Commercial parking is waived pursuant to ZR 36232. Slide please. To facilitate the development, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to change the existing R4 C22 districts along 86th Street and 14th Avenue to an R7A district with a C24 overlay. The existing C22 overlay currently extends along 360 feet of frontage on the north side of 86th Street in from 14th Avenue. The proposed R7A and C24 overlay would facilitate the aforementioned new residential development at a bulk of 4.5 FAR with lower parking requirements that encourage continuous retail frontage on the ground floor. Slide please. An R7A zoning district is a contextual zoning district with a maximum residential FAR of 4.6 with permanently affordable housing pursuant to MIH. Parking must be provided for 50% of market rate residential units and for 15% of income restricted units. Within MIH-designated areas, the minimum base height can rise between 40 and 75 feet with a maximum building height of 95 feet when providing a qualifying ground floor. Above the maximum base height, the building must be set back at least 10 feet from wide streets and 15 feet from narrow streets. The existing C22 overlay was historically designed to accommodate auto-centric commercial uses, mapped at a depth of 150 feet and requiring one parking space for every 300 square feet of commercial floor area. In contrast, the proposed C24 overlay, which in recent years has frequently been mapped when rezoning mid-density residential districts, only requires one parking space per every 1,000 square feet, thus encouraging ground floor retail and ultimately more continuous retail frontage. Slide please. The applicant also proposes a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to map MIH coterminus with the rezoning area, creating permanently affordable housing via MIH Option 1 and Option 2. Option 1 requires 25% of residential floor area be set aside for affordable housing units for residents with incomes averaging 60% AMI. Option 2 requires 30% of residential floor area be set aside for affordable housing units for residents with incomes averaging 80% AMI. The proposed development will provide 17 affordable housing units pursuant to Option 2. Slide please. This application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity. The applicant states that the proposal would produce new income restricted housing units in a location that has not seen much affordable development, with an area median income of about $55,700, which is slightly lower than Brooklyn and New York City overall. Slide please. As per the report, the racial makeup of Bath Beach and Bensonhurst is 44% Asian/Non-Hispanic, 36% white/Non-Hispanic, 16% Hispanic/Latino, and 1% black/Non-Hispanic. Slide please. From 2010 to 2020, the area saw a modest 9% increase in population with increases in the Asian, Black, and Hispanic populations and a decrease in the white population. Between 2010 and 2020, CD 11 experienced a 1.5% increase in housing units, whereas the overpopulation grew by 9.3%. Slide please. To conclude, this is a private application from Romantique Double Diamond Incorporated for a zoning map amendment from an R4 C22 district to an R7A C24 district and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to facilitate the development of a new mixed-use building, including over 43,000 square feet of residential space, 57 dwelling units, and 1,500 square feet of ground floor commercial space at 1421 86th Street in Bath Beach, CD 11, Brooklyn. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Before I start with Commissioner Benjamin, let me just, forgive me if you mentioned it already, but the width of 86th Street. Can you just note that?
Sorry, 86th Street is 100 feet wide and 14th Avenue is 80 feet wide.
14th Avenue is 80 feet wide. And of course, this is also right, very close to the park as well, right? Okay. Just noting where this building would fall in connection with wide streets and a park. Commissioner Benjamin.
I know this is just a rezoning and a zoning text change. But if it's possible, as this proceeds along, could we get a distribution of the apartments and the apartment size? Even though I know the developer is not tied to any particular design or any particular layout. It would be, I would like to know what they were looking at in terms of the size of the apartments and the distribution of that.
I can definitely reach out to the applicant and get that information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Soria.
Thank you Chair. And also thank you, sorry, congratulations on your presentation. I'm really excited to see two very strong planners presenting side by side. I had a quick question on the way in which the proposed zoning will impact directly or indirectly auto-related businesses. And I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about what has been the conversation in that regard? What are some of the provisions in place to support these businesses and so forth?
Yeah, that's a really interesting question. I think this particular applicant had experienced some COVID-related hardship as a commercial limousine rental company. I know that they have an additional outpost in Staten Island. So I think the intent was to consolidate their rental limousines to their Staten Island location. I did mention the C81 zoning district nearby. I am not aware of any conversations that have happened about facilitating or maintaining the auto uses in the area. But I can have the applicant speak further to that at the public hearing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Buzzard.
I'd be curious to know if the applicant is open or has had conversations or considered MIH Option 1, just given this area and needs for more deeper affordability wherever possible.
Yeah, I can definitely have them speak more to their rationale at public hearing.
Great, thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Amelia, thank you very much. Great job. And we will certify this item and move on to the next. So Ryan, go for it.
Certainly. The third item on our agenda is a referral of a zoning text amendment in Staten Island Community District 3. Presenting for the first time to the City Planning Commission is Amy Obanaga.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good afternoon Commissioners and Chair Garadnik. I'm presenting 56 William Avenue Project. This is a private application in the Special South Richmond Development District submitted by the estates of Clement Lemaire, seeking a text amendment to remove a portion of the designated open space from Map 3.4 with an Appendix A of Article 10, Chapter 7, on Block 5282. The text amendment will facilitate the development of one- and two-family residents on Lot 40. This is an aerial view looking northeast, Staten Island. Development site and project area are located near Great Hills Harbor in the Great Hills neighborhood of Staten Island, within Community District 3. The development site is located within a R3A zoning district, and there is an R31 zoning district to the south. There's also a mix of C1 and C2 commercial overlays, approximately 600 feet from the development site. The surrounding area consists of primarily one- and two-family detached residences, typically two stories in height. Development site area is located between Highland Boulevard to the south and Ambor Road to the north. The MTA operates several business routes along Highland Boulevard, which is designated as an Ontario Street in the Special South Richmond Development District. The existing designated open space affecting the project area was established in 1975 as part of the open space network of the Special South Richmond Development District. These restrictions, these regulations restrict development, enlargement, and site alteration within the DOS unless CPC approval is granted. Any modification to the DOS, including the removal of designated open space, requires a text amendment. Owing to the improvement of map streets and the establishment of DVP's Blue Belt Program, has created isolated portions of DOS. The subject site does not connect to a larger open space network depicted in gray, in the gray areas of the map, and no longer serves the purposes intended by the special district when it was created in 1975. The designated open space parcel traverses the subject properties on Block 5282. That's Lot 40, 42, 100, and 116, and is within King Street, which is captured with the translucent blue band you see. The project area consists of the development site, lot 40, which is approximately 4,000 square feet of lot area, an adjacent parcel which has approximately 6,000 feet of lot area, and a portion of King Street, and it's a final map Corporation Council opinion from 1992, which is unbuilt street. The designated open space affects approximately half of Lot 40 and a larger area of Lot 42 and runs coterminous with the record width of King Street, which is approximately 50 feet, for approximately 110 feet in length. The Board of Standards and Appeals approval was granted on March 19, 2002 for the waiver of the General City Law 35 to permit a building in the bed of King Street on Lot 40. The total area designated open space proposed for the removal is 10,712 square feet. Lot 40 is vacant and unimproved, lacking trees and wetlands in the area that is predominantly built up. Although only a portion of the development site is not within a designated open space, the designated open space runs along the southern lot line of development site, thereby preventing otherwise as-of-right development occurring on the property. So to reiterate, the site is vacant. This shows prospectively southwest, and southwest are the photographs. It shows that the site is a vacant lot, is not connected to a larger open space network, and is in an area that is predominantly built up. And to summarize, the requested action includes a text amendment to remove a portion of the designated open space from Map 3.4 with an Appendix A for Article 10, Chapter 7, on Block 5282, to facilitate the development of a detached two-family residence on Lot 40. And I'm happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Great, thank you very much. And okay, so this is an unusual one, and obviously not one that we see every day here, although it is perhaps much more common in South Richmond. Let's just talk about what is happening here. So at one point in time, the city mapped these designated open spaces throughout this special district, correct?
Correct.
And over time, they became disentangled and disengaged from one another in some parts. So far, right?
Correct.
And in this example, we have a small designated open space that is on privately-owned property, but which happens to be a mapped street.
Yes.
King Street.
Yes.
Okay, and the existence of this designated open space is prohibiting the estate of Clement Marat from developing
As-of-right, correct.
An as-of-right home.
Correct.
Okay, and to to remove the designated open space here, it's just an action. So it's a text, it would be a text amendment? To remove, to take it off the map, it's one of those maps, mapped texts? Yeah, explain that to us.
So to the appendix, so to, as I mentioned earlier, to Article 10, there is a series of maps, and this would be removing the designated open space from Map 3.4, which is an appendix to the article.
And just the big picture question that I would have is, you know, the purpose of designated open spaces in the Special South Richmond Development District was to preserve light and air, natural spaces, et cetera. Anything that you believe that we should be concerned about on this site as we think about removing this from that appendix?
No, as I mentioned earlier, that given that there's the Blue Belt Program that incorporates open space, these sorts of things, and these sorts of designated open space, particularly this one, which is not part of the larger network. And as I mentioned earlier, less than 600, more than like 300, a few hundred feet away is a larger area of open space already available to the community. So this is rendered now redundant in light of the Blue Belt Program. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let me see if there are other questions. Mr. Dwyer.
This will come back for a hearing for the public to opine on?
Goes to the Community Board and then the Borough President.
Next off to the Community Board and then the Borough President.
So we'll have an opportunity to hear from the neighbors what they think.
Yes.
That's sometimes.
Through the Community Board? Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, thank you Amy. Great job. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Ryan.
All right, thank you. So the fourth item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a zoning authorization in Brooklyn Community District 11. in Brooklyn Community District Seven. Our presenter is Jukey Sai.
Hello, Jukey.
This is a private application by Guinea Pick Holdings, represented by Opera Studio Architecture, for zoning authorization pursuant to ZR forty-two forty-seven to facilitate the construction of a new three-family residence in an M one two D district at one five five Eighteenth Street in South Park Slope, Brooklyn, Community District Seven. The development site is located on the north side of Eighteenth Street and generally bounded by Fourth Avenue to the east and Third Avenue to the west, which includes the elevated Gowanus Expressway. The Prospect Avenue R train station is located on Fourth Avenue, two blocks to the north, and multiple bus lines serve the general area. The development site is bordered on both sides by residential use. The block the development site occupies contains a mix of two-to-five-story single and multifamily residential buildings, one-to-three-story commercial and industrial buildings, and a five-plus-story self-storage facility. Notably, none of the manufacturing uses on the block are open heavy manufacturing uses. To the east, Fourth Avenue contains a mix of two-to-four-story commercial and residential buildings, many with retail on the ground floor, as well as four-to-ten-story residential buildings. To the east of Fourth Avenue are two-to-three-story row homes, and to the west of Third Avenue are two-to-three-story industrial and commercial buildings on large lots, as well as big-box stores and waterfront industrial usage. The development site is located in an M one two D district. M one two D is a light manufacturing district. Permitted uses include manufacturing, general service, commercial and retail, and limited community facility uses. Residential uses are permitted only by CPC authorization. There is a maximum permitted FAR of two point oh for manufacturing and commercial uses, four point eight for community facility uses, and one point six five for residential uses. Parking requirements vary by use group in M one two D districts, but no accessory parking spaces are permitted for residential uses except by authorization of the CPC. In the surrounding area, there is an M one three district located to the west of the development site, west of Third Avenue along the waterfront. There is an R eight A C two four district to the east of the development site along Fourth Avenue, and there is an R six B district located to the east of Fourth Avenue. So looking at a few site photos, these photos show the development site from Eighteenth Street. The top two face north and the bottom one faces west. These photos look south and show the building frontages across Eighteenth Street from the development site. This includes a warehouse use and a row of residential properties. And you can see that in the bottom there. The development site is a two thousand seventy-five square foot lot on the north side of Eighteenth Street between Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue. The development site is improved with a wood-framed sixteen hundred square foot two-family dwelling built in nineteen ten with an FAR of point seven eight five. The existing structure would be demolished following the approval of the authorization. The proposed development is a new three thousand four hundred square foot three-family residential building with a proposed FAR of one point six five. The requested land use action is a zoning authorization pursuant to ZR forty-two forty-seven to allow new residences or enlargements of existing residences in an M one two D district. Zoning authorizations are discretionary action taken by the CPC that modify specific zoning requirements if certain findings have been met. Authorizations are not subject to ULP review, and the CPC does not hold public hearings on authorizations. The CPC refers such authorizations to the appropriate Community Board, which in this case is Community Board seven, and that referral has already happened. In the case of an authorization for residential use pursuant to ZR forty-two forty-seven, the findings that need to be met are the following. One, residential uses will not be exposed to excessive noise, smoke, dust, toxic materials from current or previous commercial or manufacturing uses. Two, there are no heavy industrial uses within four hundred feet. Three, the residential uses will not adversely affect commercial or manufacturing uses in the district. And four, the authorization will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. In summary, this is a private application for a zoning authorization pursuant to ZR forty-two forty-seven to facilitate the construction of a new three-family residence in an M one two D district at one five five Eighteenth Street in South Park Slope, Brooklyn, Community District Seven. Thank you.
Thanks, Jukey. Let me kick this off, and since this is our opportunity, since the posture of this one is that this is essentially our hearing for the purpose of this application
Yes.
as it's a zoning authorization. Let me just run through a couple of points. Under the M one two D zoning designation, you can get this authorization that this applicant is seeking to allow either new residences or an enlargement in a district like this, correct?
Correct.
This one is presently a point seven eight five FAR, and they're tearing it down
Yeah.
and want to build a new one up to one point six five FAR. First question, it may not matter. Does that count as a new residence in this context, or does that count as an enlargement?
It does count as a new residence in this context. And I can explain a little bit about why they're pursuing that if you
Go ahead, sure.
So basically, the building code, as it currently stands, it's a wood-framed house. And the building code, the twenty fourteen building code, would not permit basically the expansion of the wood-framed house that would be created, would not be according to code. So as such, and basically built off the residential classification that exists in the building code. So as such, they're not able to expand this wood-framed home to max out the FAR here and add that unit. And because of that, they need to demolish and rebuild. And it's actually a pretty important distinction, like they can't, they have to wait until they, if they get this authorization, they need to wait to get the authorization to then demolish and build a new house.
Okay, got it. And the findings that we are charged with evaluating here, you ran through them. Let's just go through them. There's four of them, and let's talk about each.
Yes.
You know, that residential uses, the ones that are being proposed here to be called for a new residential building to replace the old one, that they wouldn't be exposed to excessive noise, dust, odor from current or prior commercial or manufacturing uses. What is the current dynamic on that block which could expose this residence to noise, dust, or odor?
I think the current condition, so there's a mix of like light warehouse usage. There aren't any real open uses, and I've walked this block. I've looked at the like land use map and looked at the individual uses. There is a self-storage facility down the block. Again, that's quite contained. And these warehouses, many of you may be familiar with some of the warehouses in Sunset Park in that M one two D district, where there are a lot of open uses with forklifts going in and out, people making deliveries. This is not one of those blocks. It is, while I imagine there is some amount of loading and traffic in and out of those facilities, it is not a sort of bustling open-use block. And then, you know, notably, I think as it relates to the second finding, no heavy industrial uses, and those are like what is typically in the M three one across Third Avenue. You know, thinking like a cement factory, or you know, a plant that produces some sort of noxious substance. And there are none of those uses on this block, those heavier manufacturing uses.
Okay, great. And then the final two findings are that the residential uses that are being proposed wouldn't actually adversely affect the other uses, the commercial and manufacturing that are otherwise present. Based on what you just said, I'm not even sure on how they would, but why don't you?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think, you know, one thing we look to a lot in this is this is an existing residence. So the character of that lot as it currently stands is a residence. So we see no addition of one, you know, one unit here and the maxing out of the FAR as adversely affecting the other uses on the block, given that this is what currently exists as the use.
Got it, and that does away with the final finding perhaps, which is that it won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. Let me see if there are other questions or comments on this application. Commissioner Goodrich.
You said it, oh, it's existing. Oh, let me just get
I actually am not quite sure of that. I can ask the applicant. This is the property that they own?
They own, right?
Yeah, and I know the intent is that they're going to live there in that property, but the renovation is going to add a unit, basically to allow the current owners to live there in addition to two tenants. Whether or not it's the returning tenant, I'm not sure of.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sore.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Two quick questions. One is, the additional unit is allowed as-of-right? Doesn't require any, we're not changing anything, any zoning allowance here?
I believe the additional unit, like what's being increased is the floor area. Although they're not increasing, like the floor area that they currently have is underbuilt for the permitted floor area of the district. So the addition of the unit itself, I think that just falls into like the residential classification. But the addition of floor area is, there's no zoning change needed because it falls within the permitted floor area of the district. It currently is half, yeah.
But to the question, there is no as-of-right residential in this district, and the authorization would be required even if they were able to just sort of increase the floor area. So it's both expansions and new buildings are required to get this authorization. So this authorization is the thing that's allowing any residential there, whether it is a new building or even an expansion for a single unit.
But the current use is residential?
Current use is residential.
Yep. And in response to Commissioner Goodrich's question, do we know if it's being used right now? I mean, are there people living there right now?
I'm not positive. I know, I believe it has been tenanted, but in anticipation of this potential renovation that they're going to do, or demolishing and rebuilding, I'm not sure if it's currently tenanted.
Okay, thank you. I have two quick follow-up questions. One is, does the one ninety-seven A plan or any local community plans tell us something about how the community has waited on this in the past?
I'm not quite sure, but do you want to like give a little bit? I know a little bit about the one ninety-seven A, but do you want to?
Well, I'm wondering if you've reviewed the one ninety-seven A plan in this regard, and there's something we can build on based on what the community has stated in the past.
I, you know, that's something I'm going to need to do. But to your point, Commissioner, I think there is a really strong desire for manufacturing uses in that M one two D district. But what I will say is also the, I think a lot of it is preserving what currently exists and making sure that has, you know, whether it's the planning backing it or the investment from the city backing it, to see that grow. But I also think that in terms of, you know, the purpose of, as I'm sure you're familiar, of the M one, the buffer districts between the heavier manufacturing, the M three along the waterfront, and then the more residential districts like the R six B across Fourth Avenue, the purpose of those softer districts, again, as I'm sure you're familiar, is having that buffer where there is the beginning of some start to residential. And I think this is very much in keeping with the purpose of the district, where there's the mix of heavier industrial as it makes its way into residential. And then for this specific block, you know, there's rows of residential on both sides where this currently exists. And I, you know, in my interacting with the Community Board, there were not, and I speak routinely with Jeremy at CB seven, there were not any concerns raised about wanting to see this specific lot turn into any sort of industrial or commercial space.
Thank you. I'm aware with some of these changes, I'm also aware this is right across the street from the significant maritime and industrial area, one block away from it. But I guess my last question, and thank you, I appreciate the response. I'm just wondering if you can share a little bit, you know, the four points that we just reviewed in terms of, you know, why this is consistent is really useful. You state that the residential uses will not have any impact on surrounding industrial. How do we determine that?
Well, this is actually something you opine on as Commissioners. And we, Technical Review Division, like reviews some of the technical findings in this in terms of what has been presented in this application is technically correct. But, you know, what you see in your briefing package is a list of the argument that the applicant makes, that their findings, basically that their application meets the spirit of these findings. And you as a Commissioner and the rest of the Commission actually will opine on this. This is the sort of the voting that you're doing.
I guess to be more explicit, your position is that the residential uses will not have any impact on the industrial?
Yes.
Why is what I want to understand?
Um, so it's looking, I mean, I would base it on a couple of things. One, it's existing residential, and it has been since nineteen ten. And just understanding that, the neighborhood has sort of formed around that, and I don't think anything is significantly going to change by adding a unit. But the other thing is, I've walked that block multiple times. If you walk the block like up towards Fourth Avenue, there's two rows of residential. And I can, I don't know, can I go back?
Presentation, yeah, we can get the presentation up again.
But, you know, there are two rows where there's three or four row homes back to back to back. And I think that this is, well, maybe this design is slightly different, very much in keeping with the existing uses that we have. So if you see here, there's residential on both sides of this specific lot. And then, while there is that warehouse across the street, if you look at this bottom photo to the left, there's also that row of residential. And though there is, I believe, an auto body shop on that corner on Fourth Avenue, I feel like it really is not out of keeping with the R six B buildings that are across Fourth Avenue.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, I appreciate these questions. And I think that is an extremely important district, and the uses are extremely important to the Community Board as well as the council member. And I take that very seriously when I say I don't think this is out of keeping. But it really does matter to the community, and I think that's a, I appreciate you bringing up that question.
I still encourage us to take a look at the one ninety-seven A and try to understand. So how can we document whether or not it aligns with local priorities? I think that this is a particular case for all of the reasons that you've mentioned, where we have to be really careful in making sure that this is aligned with what they've stated.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. I was just like, we were just making the observation. The residential presence there, I believe, is probably all pre-existing pre-existing and consistent, what's the terminology again?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Pre-nineteen sixty-one. Pre-nineteen sixty-one residential.
Yeah, pre-sixty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, I was just curious, with regard to the M one two D, other than the M one two D, is there any other manufacturing district where residential development would be authorized?
There's a variety of M one districts with the D suffix. And we have seen a small number of these authorizations. You may recall two of them were in Queens. Wycoff, I believe, was one of the, was one of the authorizations we had. I want to say last year, very early, it was before the Chair joined us in January, that we had before the chair joined us in January, uh, that we had, we voted on the, these two, um, uh, districts. So there's M1 1D through M1 5D, I believe, that has this authorization and, and I believe. The D designation, but, uh, there, I believe, uh, in, though M1 6D allows it as of right, but it's, it's a, only a Manhattan district. And then MX allows things as of right, and there's, there's rules around that, right?
Yeah, that, that I'm, I'm, I'm aware of. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Ramperchad.
There's no required parking, right, for this? Because I, I understand the whole concept that, that in Brooklyn's five district, you can't have three, so they got to move construction, but if you go to family, you're adding one more family to make it three, there's no required parking?
Yeah, no parking for residential would only be, they'd have to seek an authorization.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, great. Um, thank you, Jukey. I will note that, you know, having this up on Google Maps as I do, and you can tell me if I'm perceiving this correctly, uh, that the, the half of the block, um, one half of the block is much more filled with warehouses close to the highway, and then as you go further away from that half of the block, it is much more residential. In fact, it almost changes halfway in its character. And this site is in the residential portion of that, of that block. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I, I think that it's very fair. Um, and I think this is part of the, the beauty of Sunset Park, um, Community District 7. I'm sure many of you've been out there. Um, it's a really unique part of the city, and this interspersed residential, commercial, industrial use on these blocks is part of the fabric of this city and very important. Um, and I, again, don't think this is necessarily altering that really important fabric that is part of that neighborhood.
Yeah, I'd even go so far as to say, I don't think it changes it at all. I mean, it, to me, I look at it, and it looks like, uh, almost a one, almost a one for one change in, in the way that, uh,
Certainly not.
One would perceive the block and the experience and as it relates to the existing uses and, uh, and all of the criteria that we're asked to evaluate. So, thank you, Jukey. I appreciate this. We will put this up for a vote at a later public meeting to be scheduled, uh, by the commission, but thank you for this, and we will move on, Ryan, to the next item.
Thank you.
Uh, so the fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens, Community District 12, and our presenter is Andrew Segwin.
Chair, I'm recusing this one.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by Maupal Realty Corp. for a zoning map amendment from an R3A to an R6B zoning district with a C23 commercial overlay and a corresponding text amendment mapping mandatory inclusionary housing, or MIH. These actions would facilitate the development of a new four-story mixed-use building with approximately 56 dwelling units, of which 14 would be income restricted. The project area is located at 141-05 109th Avenue in South Jamaica, Queens, Community District 12. As a reminder, this application was certified on November 28, 2022. The project area is located approximately eight tenths of a mile south of downtown Jamaica, South Queens' primary retail and office hub. The downtown Jamaica transit hub, which provides access to the subway, Long Island Railroad, and JFK Air Train, is an approximately 20-minute walk or 10-minute bus ride from the project area. Liberty Avenue and Southern Boulevard are the nearest commercial corridors and are located a half mile north and east of the project area respectively. These corridors ho- host a range of neighborhoods serving retail needs as well as non-conforming light industrial uses. Cuny York College is located approximately one mile northeast of the project area. The project area is located approximately 600 feet east of the Van Wick Expressway, a highway that runs north-south through eastern Queens connecting JFK Airport to the Bronx. The neighborhoods of Richmond Hill and South Ozone Park are located directly to the west of the project area across the Van Wick Expressway. The surrounding area is predominantly developed with two-story, one- and two-family residential buildings colored in light yellow on the map. Additionally, there are a few multifamily walk-up buildings in the immediate area, including one directly to the north of the development site colored in dark yellow on the map. Colored in purple on the map, there are several industrial uses in the immediate vicinity, including a one-story building's material facility across the street from the project area. There are a limited number of nearby commercial uses colored in red on the map. These uses include small restaurants and convenience stores. Nearby community facilities colored in blue on the map include numerous houses of worship. The Norrally Hargleaves Playground colored in green on the map is located three blocks north from the project area. The Q40 and Q9 buses are located one block east and three blocks west of the project area respectively. Both lines serve the downtown Jamaica Transit Hub and South Ozone Park. The project area was mapped with a R32 zoning district in 1961 and was rezoned to the current R3A district as part of the 2011 South Jamaica rezoning, which sought to preserve the area's lower-density character while also allowing for moderate increases in residential and commercial density along major corridors. The rezoning to the R3A district precluded the development of multifamily residential buildings within the project area. Depicted by the dotted yellow outline on this map, the project area encompasses the southern half of Block 10068, comprising approximately 38,088 square feet. The project area is bounded by 109th Avenue to the south, 107th Road to the north, 139th Street to the west, and 142nd Street to the east. Shaded in teal on this map, the proposed development site is located on all but two of the project area's tax lots. The development site is wholly owned by the applicant and is currently improved by a materials, storage, yard, and office. Depicted with pink outlines, two lots within the project area are not part of the development site. Lot 218, comprising approximately 4,000 square feet, is located at the western corner of the block and is currently improved by a two-story, two-family residential building. Lot 216, also comprising approximately 4,000 square feet, is unimproved and is currently used as a materials yard. This photo looks northwest from the corner of 109th Avenue and 142nd Street. Currently comprised of a materials yard, this section of the project area is proposed to host the entrances to the development site's residential and commercial spaces as one of the two, as well as one of the two entrances for its community facility space. This photo looks southwest down 109th Avenue towards the Van Wick Expressway. The development site is located to the right of the photo. The applicant is proposing to build a four-story, 42-foot-tall mixed-use building. The building would comprise 60,770 square feet of floor space and 56 dwelling units, of which approximately 14 would be income restricted. In addition to the residential use, the development is proposed to contain a 5,950-foot, square-foot community facility, a 4,587 square-foot office, a 5,165 square-foot retail space, and 3,660 square feet of landscaped open space, all of which would be located at the ground floor. Floors 2 through 4 would be comprised of residential uses totaling 45,068 square feet. The proposed development's floor area ratio is 2.02. I'll note that this is a slight decrease in the initial proposal of a 45-foot-tall building with 60 residential units, including 15 income-restricted units, across 48,005 square feet of residential floor space. This change is based on the community board's concern about the building's height in relation to the surrounding context. The proposed development includes 39 accessory parking spaces and a below-grade attendant parking garage. This is an increase from the original proposal of 28 unattended parking spaces. Additional parking spaces were included to reflect the community board's concern of the development impacting street parking availability in the immediate neighborhood. This map depicts the proposed development's ground floor plan. Entrances to the building's residential shaded in yellow, office shaded in pink, retail shaded in orange, and parking shaded in gray spaces would all be provided along 109th Avenue. Access to the community facility shaded in blue would be available via one entrance at the corner of 109th Avenue and 142nd Street, and a second entrance further down 142nd Street. The applicant, who owns the materials business that is currently located on the development site, would utilize the proposed office space to maintain that use on site. The retail space, which would be located adjacent to the office, has yet to be tenanted or proposed for a specific use. Located at the corner of 109th Avenue and 142nd Street, the applicant has yet to determine a specific use for the community facility. The community facility would have access to 3,660 square feet of landscaped open space at the rear of the building. I'll note here that while the applicant originally proposed that this space be tenanted by a pre-K, they are now exploring other options for the space. In addition to these uses, a publicly accessible 249-square-foot seating area would be provided at the corner of 109th Avenue and 142nd Street. The three existing curb cuts that are used for truck loading into the material site would be replaced by a single 12-foot-wide curb cut that would serve the parking garage at the far western edge of the development site on 109th Avenue. To facilitate the development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from an R3A district to an R36B district with a C23 commercial overlay on the project area. The R6B district would allow for a maximum FAR of 2.2 for residential uses with a suitable provision of inclusionary housing, and 2.0 for community facility uses. The C23 commercial overlay would facilitate developments, office, and retail space, allowing for a maximum commercial FAR of 2.0. In addition to the zoning map amendment, the applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment to map MIH on the site pursuant to option 1 or option 2. Shaded in dark gray on this map, the MIH boundary would be coterminous with the rezoning boundary. The applicant intends to pursue option 1, which requires 25% of the residential floor space to be income restricted at an average of 60% of the area meeting income or AMI. This action was, would result in approximately 14 income-restricted units on the development site. For context, the AMI of the local area is approximately $65,000 per year, which is lower than the borough overall, which has an AMI of approximately $72,000 per year. On January 25th, Queens Community Board 12 held a vote recommending to deny the application with 24 members voting in favor, one against, and zero abstaining. There were no conditions or recommendations made along the vote. The community board expressed concern with the building's height and architectural character in relation to the surrounding development context, potential traffic impacts caused by new residential, commercial, and community facility uses, and the flood risks that may impact the project area as a result of the development. On February 2nd, the Queens Borough President held a public hearing and on February 13th issued a recommendation to approve the application with conditions related to local hiring, minority and women-owned business enterprises, use of sustainable building materials and energy systems within the proposed development, and seeking a local community organization to tenant the ground floor commercial and community facility space. To summarize, Maupal Realty Corp. is seeking a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a four-story mixed-use building with 56 residential units, of which 14 would be income restricted, 9,752 square feet of commercial space, and 5,950 square feet of community facility space. The applicant will be available to answer questions at Wednesday's public hearing, but I'm happy to answer any inquiries that the commission may have at this time.
Thanks very much, Andy. I, I, um, I will spare you my questions since we're going to ask them of the applicant on Wednesday, but the sorts of things that I'm interested in are, uh, what sort of retail the applicant believes would be suitable for the, uh, ground floor space, um, as well as the possibility for community facility and the access to the 3,600 square feet of landscaped open space. If you, if you would like to address any of that now, fine, great, otherwise, we can just hold that till Wednesday, which was my intention in any event, but I, I'll just let you know or say out loud, some of those, those are some of the things that I'd like to ask about on Wednesday.
Yeah, I can provide some kind of preliminary info around that, and then I'll make sure the applicant, um, is prepared to detail those on Wednesday. So in regards to, I'll, I'll kind of answer the retail and community facility space in conjunction. Um, they're looking for a sort of community-oriented partner. They're not necessarily looking for a nationally-based chain for the retail space or, or anything like that. Um, from what I understand, they've reached out to, um, a couple members of the healthcare, you know, realm, as well as, um, the educational realm, and they're, they're kind of working with members of the elected community, specifically in regards to the educational component. So they're looking at a couple of different options, and I think their intention is, you know, once they have a proposal for both or either of those spaces, to run those through the local community to, to make sure that the community is kind of in line with, with what they've originally proposed. Um, in regards to the open space in the backyard, their original proposal was, um, for a pre-K to go in the community facility space, and the open space would be accessory to that. Um, just for background, during the community board hearing, there was concerns about maybe a saturation of those types of uses in the local neighborhood. So the applicant said, okay, we'll get back to you. We'll kind of look into a broader scope of options in regards to this. Um, so it's still on the table. Um, if they do go with an educational space, the open space will be accessory to that. Um, if they go with something else, their intention is for the open space to be available to tenants of the residential units above.
Got it. Thank you very much. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin. Commissioner Benjamin did not have any questions. We just, you know, had a, a non-verbal miscommunication on that, and that is okay. Let's go to Commissioner Marine.
Sure, I'm just gonna ask one simple question, because I'm hearing that the, the open space, which I also was concerned about, may be used by a potential pre-K or a potential first-floor tenant. What about open recreational space for the residents if they, they cannot access that backyard?
So there's additional recreational space that will be provided in the building, not necessarily in the backyard, but I think on floors 2 through 4, there's, um, some terraces. Um, there might also be something on the roof, and then there's also recreational space, um, that's going to be available for the tenants as well.
Some plans delineating that would be very helpful. So if you could ask the applicant, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify, you mentioned saturation, uh, as a concern of the community board? Saturation of educational uses?
It's specifically to pre-K. Um, they felt like there were already sort of an abundance of pre-K facilities in the local neighborhood. Um, this wasn't necessarily something that was based on any quantitative, um, evidence or anything like that, but it was sort of speculated in that regard. Um, and I think from what I understand that the applicant is liaising with, um, SCA on, on actually determining a requirement for that space.
When you, uh, when pre-K would be distinguished from, uh, a, a daycare center, would it not?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bozorg to be followed by Commissioner Osorio.
I, I have the same question. I was curious if the data supported the claim about a saturation of UPKs. Um, but I was also curious whether, um, I guess on, on Wednesday, if the applicant could speak to, um, whether the community board, whether there's consideration of, uh, whether the computer, their senses that the community board actually wants to work with them on, on making it a better project, or if they just are kind of opposed to a, a larger residential, um, project in general. Um, if you could have them speak to that.
For sure, I will. Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll have other members of the public.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. And, um, just a quick, uh, comment on, on, on whether, uh, when we hear directly from the applicant, we can discuss a little bit, any consideration to their concerns about flooding. It seems to be associated with more like stormwater flooding events than anything, but it would be interesting to see how they're responding to that.
Yeah, I'll let them, um, provide some details about that. I think they also have a slide about some of the sort of green building strategies that they're incorporating. Um, I will say in regards to the project area itself, um, it's outside of the 1% and the 0.1% flood plan. Um, however, in South Jamaica and in southeast Queens more generally, there is a widespread issue with, um, stormwater-related flooding events. Um, so it is definitely at a neighborhood-level concern, but at least according to the applicant, they've never had any flood issues on the development site historically.
Yeah, thank you. The, I agree with you. The maps show something else in terms of stormwater management, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, with that, we're off to a public hearing on 141-05 109th Avenue on Wednesday. Um, and thank you, Andy, for that. And, uh, Ryan, let's go on to the next item.
Uh, certainly. So we have, uh, future votes, uh, scheduled for a vote on Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, is 6199 Amboy Road and 16 Goth Avenue. It's a special South Richmond certification. Uh, staff believe that the application has met the findings and is recommending approval on this. Uh, for post-hearing follow-up, we have the paperific rezoning. Uh, Josh Vogel is here, uh, with the staff recommendation and follow-up.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. The department supports the proposed actions which would facilitate the development of 105,000 square-foot commercial space in the Borough Park neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 12. The change in zoning district to a C44A will support future growth in the area, provide more flexibility in uses, allow for the expansion of a local business, bring permanent jobs to the area, and allow for a row of homes to come into compliance with zoning. While the project does not include a residential component, the district provides flexibility for contextual residential uses at an increased density, which the department supports. at an increased density, which the department supports. Given the project area is surrounded by existing residential uses and an R six district, a short walk from two subway lines. Furthermore, the special permit will allow for the development of an under-yacht utilized stretch of Thirty-seventh Street, not only allowing for a more successful three-block development that shifts the parking and loading away from a residential street, but also bringing needed improvements to this former railroad right-of-way that has been almost entirely redeveloped since it was discontinued over thirty years ago. Lastly, the zoning text amendment will ensure that future developments in the project area will provide permanently income-restricted housing, which is sorely needed in this community district that is rapidly increasing in population despite producing one of the lowest numbers of housing units in the borough over the past decade. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Uh, moving on, we have uh, two forty-five oh six South Conduit Avenue Commercial Overlay. Uh, Scott Solomon, I believe, is in the Zoom uh, with his recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, the Department of City Planning staff resort, uh, supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map to facilitate the applicant's efforts to legalize the existing ground-floor tire sales and installation facility that the applicant has operated since two thousand nine. D C P believes that the existing R three-two, C one-three zoning, particularly the commercial overlay, is inappropriate as South Conduit Avenue a major thoroughfare and a commercial corridor. The agency believes that the proposed C two-three commercial overlay mapped, also mapped approximately nine hundred feet east, uh, appropriately reflects the existing land uses within the project area and would support a wider range of likewise appropriate commercial uses. In addition, the establishment of the C two-three commercial overlay would maintain the low-density scale of the surrounding area. A C P C report reflecting this recommendation has been prepared uh, and is awaiting distribution to the commission. That concludes the agency recommendation for this application. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Um, and we have the twenty-five forty-six Far Rockaway Boulevard rezoning, and Kathy Ko is in the Zoom. The recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, the Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map to facilitate the development of a new five-story residential building on under-utilized land uh, that's been vacant for over a decade. And the establishment of the R six B district is appropriate due to its proximated transit and open space, and the new building would provide income-restricted units pursuant to M I H, um, incorporate flood-resilient measures, and reinforce the residential character of the surrounding area. And a C P C report reflecting this recommendation is being drafted for the C P C.
Thanks, Kathy. Uh, and then we have twenty-three ten Queens Plaza South. Uh, Teal Daly is in the Zoom with a recommendation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, next slide, please. The Department of City Planning staff recommends um, approval of twenty-three ten Queens Plaza South, which includes a zoning map amendment, a zoning text amendment, and a special permit to modify bulk requirements. And these would facilitate twenty-two-story enlargement of an existing four-story um, vacant-lot building in Long Island City. This would create over three hundred and twenty thousand square feet of commercial floor area with office uses, retail, um, and community meeting space. And these actions are appropriate and they, these actions are appropriate as they would uh, change an M one-five R nine district to an M one-six R nine district. And this would allow uh, commercial development specifically, which is in alignment with the goals of the two thousand and one establishment of the special Long Island City Mixed Use District, which helps implement the central business district in Long Island City. And these actions would increase access to jobs, and they would also promote reverse commuting and improve street activation on a major corridor with access to eight subway lights. Um, and a, a C P C report is being prepared for this project. This concludes my recommendation.
Thank you, Teal.
All right. And uh, finally, we have twenty-five sixty Boston Road rezoning. Uh, Ten Dealing is here with some follow-up and a staff recommendation.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. The project is twenty-five six feet. Boston Road rezoning is on the agenda today as a post-hearing follow-up item. The application was certified on October twenty-fourth of last year, and the public hearing took place on February fifteenth. A few items came up at the public hearing that we would like to give clarity on today, specifically the proposed parking and housing affordability and to provide the staff recommendation. As a reminder, the application entails two proposed actions. The zoning map amendment is to rezone the site from the existing R six and C eight-one zoning districts to a R seven-two zoning district with a C two-four commercial overlay. And the zoning text amendment is to amend Appendix F of the zoning resolution to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area, options one and two, coterminous with the rezoning area. The proposed development includes a hundred and seventeen parking spaces, fifty spaces accessory to the ground-floor commercial uses would be provided at grade, and the remaining sixty-seven spaces would be in the cellar and available to residents. The proposed development meets the parking requirements per the zoning resolution for its residential component, providing sixty-seven parking spaces, and no parking would be required for the commercial uses here. Fifty parking spaces are proposed here for the future grocery store, um, and that is to replace the existing fifty-five parking spaces that the existing supermarket on-site uses. As said, designating the rezoning area as an M I H area is one of the proposed actions here. Uh, the applicant intends to finance the development through H D C's Mix and Match Program that would impose affordability requirements that go beyond those of the mandatory inclusionary housing program. As outlined in a letter to Community Board Eleven, the applicant intends to provide sixty percent of the units affordable to households earning up to sixty percent of A M I, with the remaining units affordable to households earning up to a hundred percent of A M I, as shown on the table on the slide. The proposed development is in Bronx Community District Eleven, a community district that has experienced little housing production in recent years. Based on data made available through the agency's Equitable Development Data Explorer, the housing stock in this community district grew by one point one percent, um, that is five hundred and thirty units during the twenty-ten, twenty-twenty period. During this time, the district's population grew by five point three percent, that is six thousand five hundred and eighty-seven people. And in terms of affordable housing production, eighty-one affordable housing units were built since twenty-fourteen, of which four units are available, uh, are, are affordable to households earning no more than eighty percent of A M I. The Department of City Planning recommends approval of the proposed zoning map amendment and M I H designation for twenty-five sixty Boston Road rezoning. These actions would facilitate the development of a predominantly residential mixed-use development with three hundred and thirty-three units of income-restricted housing within a community district that has seen the construction of eighty-one income-restricted units since two thousand and fourteen. The development would help meet the city's goals of creating more affordable housing, and its inclusion in a transit zone will support utilization of public transit. The development received favorable support from the Bronx Borough President, and in addition, the applicant has expressed a willingness to accommodate asks from Community Board Eleven regarding affordability and to relocate the existing grocery store to a nearby location during construction. Taking these into consideration, the Department of City Planning recommends approval for the two actions. One last note, uh, as discussed at the February thirteenth review session, uh, Community Board Eleven has not submitted a recommendation to date, but intends to still submit a non-compliant recommendation, as in non-compliant with U L R. Um, at last Thursday's full board meeting, uh, three motions were adopted by the board. Um, there's no rec, written record of these motions yet, so I'm sort of speaking to them in a general sense. Uh, one motion was adopted to submit an unfavorable recommendation, and two motions were adopted to impose conditions if the application were to be approved at the end of the U L R process. These conditions are to require deeper affordability levels, and second, to provide more parking spaces as part of the proposed development. A recommendation reflecting these motions was not yet submitted as of the start of today's review session. Um, and again, Bronx Borough President Gibson submitted a favorable recommendation without conditions on January thirty-first. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Tyn. Uh, Commissioner Marine has a comment or question?
Sure, I, I just heard something that was kind of weird for me and disturbing, so I'd like for you to uh, elaborate on the non-compliant U L R that the community board thinks that this application is.
No, s- sorry, um, I, I understand your question. Um, they are submitting or they're, uh, looking to submit a recommendation, but I would not be compliant with U L R because the, their time has run out by, by a bit now, so.
Oh, I misunderstood. Thank you.
So, it's a non-compliant recommendation, not a non-compliant U L R?
Right.
Yeah, correct. Sorry. Yeah.
Good. Vice Chair Knuckles. All right, I'm sorry. Commissioner Marine, I'm sorry.
I do have one other question.
Yes.
Um, because this sort of after reviewing materials and looking at ownership, so Slate is not the current owner of the property. They're actually purchasing, and they're the ones bringing the application forward to rezon.
Um, so the grocery store right now is owned by Boston Road Associates, and they are entering or have entered a joint venture with Slate Property Group to uh, develop the, the, the rezoning area.
So, it will be a joint venture?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Now, just refresh my recollection. Did not the uh, uh, Community Board, Community Board Eleven weigh in in the sequence of their, uh, of the U L R? During the sequence of, of the U L R?
They did not.
But they did not?
No, we didn't get a recommendation from them.
No, there, there, there's nothing of record right now. At, at la- last week's full board meeting, they did in the end um, adopt motions that, that would be the basis of a recommendation, I believe they will submit.
I see. All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Tyn. Um, Ryan, anything else today?
No, there are no further items on our agenda.
Okay, with that, uh, thank you all for your time and attention. We will see you back here on Wednesday at ten o'clock for our public hearings, and with that, we're adjourned. Thanks to everybody for their time and attention today.